I'd like to welcome everyone to a special meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anybody wishing to record tonight's meeting? Seeing none, Counselor Donnelly, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City, Clerk Alphon, would you please conduct the roll call?
Absolutely. President Kuchmarek?
Present.
Counselor Boishman?
Here.
Counselor Clark? Counselor Deena Tally?
Here.
Counselor Donnelly?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Caddy?
Here.
Counselor Squalia?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
Warrant for a special meeting of the City Council. A special meeting of the City Council will be held on Tuesday, December 3, 2019, immediately following the regular City Council meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM at Memorial Middle School at the 615 Rollstone Street in Fitchburg. The agenda will consist of the following this evening. Hearing of the classification and taxation of property according to use in accordance with provisions of Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979, as amended by Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak during public forum, and may do so for not more than two minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under public forum?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor and city officials. For the record, my name is Roy Nasimento, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the President and CEO of the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce, which is based here in Fitchburg. And many of you are familiar with the Chamber, but we are a membership-based, volunteer-led organization focused on advancing North Central Massachusetts and the communities here in North Central Massachusetts. We have a dynamic program of work and an impressive record of accomplishment, supporting local businesses and growing the economy. We see ourselves as a partner to the city, working collectively towards the common goals of prosperity and thriving community. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening on an important issue which impacts economic development and the future of this community. I would like to start by thanking you all for your work to improve the city's business climate, both for its existing businesses and for those considering locating in Fitchburg. I would also like to thank the mayor and his administration, who have made economic development a priority. The efforts of the council and the mayor are making a difference. It is clear that Fitchburg is open for business and that development is gaining some momentum, which grows stronger every year. Your decision to gradually move towards a single tax rate is the right decision long-term for the city. Making the commercial tax burden more competitive will position Fitchburg to attract new business investment, retain existing businesses, increase tax revenues, and change outdated perceptions that the city is unfriendly to business. The council has clearly recognized the business community's importance to the future of Fitchburg and should continue to support and strengthen it. The Chamber believes it is important that we maintain the momentum gained in recent years and continue working towards a single tax rate. We're looking to you to once again provide leadership this evening when setting the commercial tax rate. We recognize that tax rates are only one factor in an economy, but they are a powerful one. And adopting a single tax rate this evening would send a positive message to local businesses and undo a serious mistake that was made many years ago that has left Fitchburg at a competitive disadvantage. This is a critical moment in time for the city of Fitchburg and for the local economy. There are a number of positive economic development projects in the pipeline that have the potential to help usher in major growth and prosperity for the community. This year, the council stands at the precipice of addressing this competitive disadvantage once and for all. I would encourage you to take this pivotal step and realize the goal this council has worked towards in recent years. Communities thrive with a solid base of businesses, jobs, resources, and tax revenue, and these are the result of business-friendly policies and tax rates. Thank you again for your time this evening on this important economic development matter. We look forward to continuing to work with the city to help advance the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening, Counselors. Mayor, city officials, members of the public, as many of you are aware, my name is Christopher McDermott, and I serve as the Public Affairs Manager for the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. To reiterate what our President and CEO, Roy Nasimento, just said a moment ago, we're a regional business organization that represents roughly 1,000 businesses across 17 communities, of which Fitchburg is one. Located at the center of our region, this city has long held the area in terms of business, population, and political clout. This enabled Fitchburg to attract a state university, construct major public transit hub, and develop a thriving city center spotted with shops, restaurants, cafes, and theaters. Unfortunately, at some point over four decades ago, your predecessors chose to break with their neighbors and move away from the single tax rate. Unsurprisingly, businesses took this decision as a sign that the city was indifferent to their needs and concerns. Many who already resided here relocated, while those considering building here decided against it. The city's once bustling downtown came to be overshadowed by its counterpart to the South, an investment that might have otherwise come here, increasing the tax base and eliminating the need to raise rates, were directed to other municipalities instead. Fortunately, in recent years, Fitchburg has come to recognize this issue and face it head-on. The city has made a concerted effort to cultivate its business community and welcome entrepreneurs who wish to invest here. At the heart of this effort has been the move towards a single tax rate, and the results are self-evident. The city has attracted Great Wolf Lodge, redevelopment of key parcels is currently underway, and longstanding investment in business owners have expanded their operations within the city. Last year, this council took the historic step of narrowing the gap between commercial and residential rates by six points. Tonight, we ask you to continue that trend and bring an end to the short-sighted decision which has hampered the city's growth for over 30 years. Doing so creates jobs, supports local business, and expands the city's tax base. I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to invite our team from the Board of Assessors to join us. Gentlemen, I just ask you to introduce yourself, and then the floor is yours.
Mr. President?
Can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion that we hold.
No, they currently have the floor. I can recognize you after they've had the opportunity to speak and present.
Okay.
Counselor. Gentlemen.
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor and others viewing this hearing. My name is Harold Scheid, joined this evening by my colleague and fellow Board of Assessors member, Chris Paquette, and together, we hope to give you a few summary facts about the state of the assessment world that we operate in here in Fitchburg. We know the focus of this classification hearing is really to set a tax rate. There are two components that factor into tax rates. One major component is the budget, of course, and the property tax revenues required to fund that budget. All of that was established earlier in the year. The second component, of course, is the assessed values, both individually for property owners and in the aggregate for the city. And we'd like to talk a little bit about some of the summary highlights of this assessment year. This was a full revaluation year with a Department of Revenue audit of our evaluations. We have passed muster, both in terms of our assessments, and our assessment practices have likewise been certified by the Department of Revenue. With that, we can come into this session knowing that the assessment questions have been answered, and we have Department of Revenue sanction of those values. With that, I'll let my colleague, Chris, provide you with some highlights, and then I'll take back the floor to talk a little bit about levies and tax rates.
Thank you, Harold. So once again, my name is Chris Paquette. I am the assessor for the city of Fitchburg and also a member of the Board of Assessors. I put together just some brief talking points this evening to give you a state of the real estate market within the city of Fitchburg, which is where we're operating. This year, we saw the city's growth stay strong, adding $30.4 million in new taxable value. The city still receives the largest portion of value through personal property. However, it's important to note that this year's growth was more evenly shared between the residential and commercial and industrial segment than in years past. This is a positive sign for the increased investment in the commercial-industrial portion of the city's tax base. The total real property valuations increased by almost $248 million, an increase of just under 9.7% overall in the city's real estate market. The good news with that is the levy ceiling, which when I first got here, the worry was we were going to crash into it in two years, has been shrinking, so we're getting further away from the maximum amount that we can raise, which is a good thing. The closer to the $25 tax rate is bad, and we're seeing nothing but positive as far as the levy and the levy ceiling is concerned. The trend is also moving towards balanced increases across the residential, commercial, and industrial segments, unlike some of the previous years. The new balance that we've seen, as I stated, for the three-year average for residential, commercial, and industrial continues to remain positive. The real estate market continues to show signs of improvement with the interest rates remaining low, as shown in the 10% increase, basically roughly 10% increase in the city's overall value this year. Several new projects are coming on board next year that will also add significant new growth. Three large new solar projects and two large-scale growing facilities that have been permitted and they're in the process of construction now haven't hit our, hasn't hit our tax, the books for taxation as of yet. Commercial reinvestment in several plazas, including the Twin City Plaza and Central Plaza on Water Street, continue to improve, make improvements and increase the values of those areas. 16 new single-family homes were constructed during fiscal 2019, and it's important to note that they're not spec, instead of a developer coming in and building a house to sell, these are predominantly custom homes. The nice thing about a custom home is when we talk about the average single-family home being in the $215,000 range, these houses are assessed in the $400,000 to $600,000 range, which is huge as far as the implications on the taxes. And Fitchburg's average single-family tax bill continues to remain one of the lowest in any of the surrounding communities, as another positive note. So with that, I yield.
I'd like to add just a couple of more bullets, if I could. Some very positive signs, Chris talked about the general increase in property values. We have seen over the last five or six years some modest increases in the market values of people's homes and properties. That has really accelerated in the past year. We know that because we measure annually the correlation between assessed values and sale prices of those properties that are sold, and we found ourselves before the revaluation coming in significantly below sale price on virtually all the properties that sold in town. The explanation for that, I think, is that if we look at communities east of Fitchburg, and actually this region in North Central Massachusetts, people are really priced out of housing in, east of here, looking to communities like Fitchburg as now a really wonderful opportunity to find what is still a very affordable housing stock. We've also seen a marked increase in the value of multifamily homes, that a function of escalating rents. Rents for a two-bedroom apartment might have averaged several years ago around $800 a month. We typically see $1,000 to $1,200 a month rents now for two-bedroom apartments. That also has an impact on multifamily values. So a lot of interesting dynamics at play in this real estate market, and we hope that that trend will continue. We believe it will continue. You're here tonight, though, to talk about tax rates, and while the Board of Assessors does not have an official position on how you should vote on a single tax rate, or alternatively the split rate, we are prepared to talk about various tax rate options. Last year, you adopted a commercial tax shift factor of 1.06, essentially taking what would have been a single rate and increasing that rate 6%, resulting in an offset or a reduction in the residential rate. The rate coming into last year's classification hearing was 1.12, I believe, so you chose to reduce that commercial shift factor by 6%. So there's a mere 6% left to get to a single tax rate. We are looking to raise, through the property tax levy, about $55,661,000. That does represent an increase over last year's property tax levy of $53,673,000, so roughly a $2 million increase in the property tax revenue stream. That is, in percentage terms, a 3.7% increase in the levy. Now understand, a good portion of that increase is due to new construction, the new construction that Chris spoke of. So if we look, then, at the complexion of our tax base, we see this year that the residential class represents about 78.8% of the taxable valuation, leaving about 21% of all property taxes on a single tax rate paid by the commercial, industrial, and personal property class. If you were to adopt last year's tax rate, and actually, we have a tax rate options spreadsheet we can refer to here, you may have it as part of your packet, but if you adopted last year's 1.06 shift factor, we would actually see our tax rate on residential properties drop from $20.49 last year to $19.39. Now, we always have to stop here with a bit of caution, because I just described to you the wonderful growth in valuation and property values that we've experienced. So the combination of higher values, lower tax rate, will still yield, for the average property owner, a net increase. That increase at a 1.06 CIP shift factor would be about a 3.1% increase in taxes for the class. It's actually, for the homeowner, a bit less than that, because, again, we have, in this mix and the calculation, new growth to account for. So the actual increase at a 1.06 shift factor would be something less than 3.1%. At this point, Chris and I will take questions.
Questions from Counselors. Counselor Squalia?
So first of all, I'd like to talk about the timing of this meeting and the documents that we received. Normally, we get this nice classification book in October, and we didn't get this until late Wednesday before this meeting, two months. Is this due to DOR, not?
So this is a certification year, which is always a challenging year in any community that undergoes a certification. We could point to several issues on the DOR side, but the process yielded nothing in the way of issues, yet the process drug on and on and on. We actually didn't get final certification of our values until this afternoon. So without the requisite information, that book was difficult to, or almost impossible to prepare. We are looking at compiling a book after the fact, and Chris and I have been talking about reinventing that document a bit, and...
The document, you know, historically, over the years, they're very good, and they're very informational, and, you know, the charts are very easy to share with residents, so I really appreciate that, as opposed to these long, drawn-out charts that are more difficult to share with residents to understand their tax bill.
Understood, and we hope to accommodate.
So is this something that we should expect every three years, like a two-month lag? Because we're coming up, right now, we have to certify this rate by the end of December, correct, in order to...
We're hoping to actually have a certified tax rate by the end of this week. It takes a matter of some weeks to generate tax bills. We'll have to prepare a tax file to send to the tax collector, so...
So this whole meeting is happening right at the deadline, like the last, I mean, possibly we could stretch this out till next week if we needed more time to discuss it, but we're really at the edge, right?
I think so. There's a lot of work to be done to get those bills out on time.
Yep. All right.
Counselor Green?
Can you just explain to the residents at home that don't have this information in front of them, when you talk about that 3.1% on average, what does that mean as an increase to a tax bill?
That would, at 3.1%, that would be, on an average, residents about $125 increase. Now, as I mentioned, the 3.1% would not account for new homes and new construction that, so the actual increase is something less than that. If you...
They have the sheet. In the documents that were sent, there is a table that was provided by the Assessors' office, and in that, there's the chart.
Yeah.
And in the chart, it'll give you the breakdown. So if you look on the left-hand column for the FY 2020 shift, and you go to the 106 for 106%, and you work your way across, it gives you the average increase of a single-family home's tax bill. It would be $127.28, based on the math we had at this time. With rounding, it's probably off by a few cents, based on the fact that this was produced last week, and we got our value certified today, but it wouldn't be off by more than, say, five cents. And that's based on an average single-family home of $212,470. And then, as you see, you go across, and then on the next page, we took the major categories, single-family residential, commercial, industrial, two families, three families, and condominiums. And if you turn to the next page, they'll have the split, or the adjustments for each of the tax rates.
Right. I just wanted to clarify for those at home that are listening and anticipating what we may or may not do, what that means, because they understand dollars and cents.
Sure, in dollar figures, sure.
You know, I mean, graphs and charts are nice, but they understand money and where it hits them in their pocket, so I want them to be aware that when we talk percentage, you know, it equals dollar signs, and that dollar sign is $125, you know, give or take, at 3.1.
Of course, the challenge is always, when you're dealing with averages, where do you, where does your property fit relative to the average? The average isn't the median or the midpoint, per se, but it does imply that there are a number of people that have valuations greater than the average and would and should anticipate a larger increase than the roughly 125, 127 that we're looking at.
Right. No, it's impressive that you got this information pulled together as quickly as you did, so I appreciate that. I like the binder, but this certainly kind of bullets and highlights what we need to do and how we need to go about doing it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselors, just because I've heard this twice already, I started this evening before we began talking to both the gentlemen in front of me about ensuring that typically, what essentially we've gotten at this time of year is a year-end report, inclusive of the historical data, all of the past information, coupled with the classification documents that we need to make our decision today. So because that booklet wasn't able to be assembled, I've asked for essentially what would be the year-end, the year-end report, or the yearly report, to that be forwarded us, once it can be completed. So we might not get that for a little bit, but certainly, I'm asking that as soon as that documentation is available, that we can receive that, we can have it be placed on file at the Clark's office, or referred to a committee if so necessary for a further report or presentation, if this body deems it. So we'll certainly, that request will be made. It has been made, and I'll be following up after this meeting to ensure that we get those documents. That said, Counselor Deena Tally?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, since we're so close to the single rate, I remember in 2008, in my first meeting, the rate shift was 37%. It was 137. To have it be at 106, or starting at 100 and potentially being at 100, is a monumental achievement that takes a lot of political will and courage on the council's part, past and present. I just wanted to point out some numbers from that spreadsheet you gentlemen gave us, because at a single tax rate, which is where we start every year, people misconstrue that we start where we set it last year. No, we revert back to 100, and if we don't do anything tonight, or we essentially say we're going to have a single tax rate, nothing's being shifted. So what we do every two year, every year is shift away from single. And every year, as Counselor Green alluded to, the residents hear the increased number, and then they shut off. They don't want to hear any of the statistics that Chris brought up. They don't want to hear anything that's trending positively. Some politicians take the opportunity to bash the city by telling the residents that we're squeezing them, without being honest with them about where the money's going. Because if they're against this, they need to come up with ideas as to where they're going to get the money in order to pay for our recurring expenses. So they're not being very honest with the residents. And I think the residents, by and large, get it. I've been here 12 years. I have been one of the most vocal advocates of moving this back. When residents are explained it, they get it. They may not like it, but they get it. And what I wanted to point out tonight is, at a single tax rate, the average single-family home would be hit with an average increase for the year of $194.62. And again, that's where most people will stop, right there. But what I wanted to point out this evening for the council and the public viewing this is, and hopefully for the press who never gets this right, and probably won't still, in FY 15, what I did tonight was I went back to the last five booklets we got, FY 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, actually, more than that, six booklets. So I went all the way back to FY 15, and I wanted to see what the single-family average increase in taxes would be for that single year if the single rate were adopted that year. Because it's quite telling, with all the growth that we've seen, where the trends are going. So in FY 15, if we had a single tax rate, the increase would have been $345, compared to this year, 195. It was 344 in 2015, 321 in 16, 356 in 17, 348 in 18, 306 in 19, 195 this year. Every single year prior to this year, we've seen increases north of $300. This year, the increase is 36% less than it was last year. Now, why is that important? Because we have talked for years about the single tax rate shift, coupled with new growth, will not lower the taxes, decrease them overall, it will trend in that direction, where you will see increases every year but at a declining rate. So think of it, simple terms, last year, we raised it $1. This year, it's only being raised 64 cents. And I want the residents to really... And I want the residents to really process that, that the average increase every year for a single tax rate was $312. This year, it's 195. This is the lowest increase we have seen on this council in over a decade, and the trend has been going in that direction since 2017. So, I just wanted to stress that point, that the 195, while an increase, is an increase at a declining rate. And why is that? Because our valuations continue to grow. Our valuation for an average single-family home in FY 15 was $156,000. This year, it's 212,470. It's 36% higher this year than it was five years ago. So, our valuations for single-family homes are up 36% over five or six years, and the rate of increase is down 44% from where it was six years ago. So, I can't stress it enough, I keep repeating it, because I want people to listen, that there's an increase, but it's significantly less than previous years, and has been trending in that direction. And that's because of the increased valuation. The commercial valuations have grown by 23% in the last six years, and the industrial value has been 32%. What we're talking about here, folks, if we start at 106, and we go down one, two points each, for every two-point shift, it's a dollar 87 more a month. So, if we were at 106, and then we went to 100, or if we went, we're at 106, we went to 104, the difference would be $3.74 a month. So, the increase takes place when the budget is set. That's what you gentlemen alluded to earlier, the 106, if we stayed at 106, it'd be 127, would be the increase. That was because of what happened at the budget. So, I wanted to stress those two key factors, because it's very important for residents to see that our valuations continue to grow, and the rate of increase in our taxation continues to drop. And so, that's the positive I want to take out of this. And the increase, if it were at a single tax rate, that 195 would be $16.22 more a month, average. So, I have, I want to thank you, gentlemen. This is a long time coming for me, and I'm glad that you stress, and we always stress, I know that Chamber has stressed that. This is not the cure-all. No one has ever said it is. It's a factor amongst many. I believe more than 95% of Worcester County doesn't have a dual rate. I think maybe Clinton and Air have one, Worcester, maybe two or three communities out of the plethora of communities have a single, dual tax rate. We're way behind the eight ball on this one. And I'm not going to question past councils for what they've done. They had their reasons, but I think it's fair to say at this point that what those actions that took place many years ago helped drive businesses out of this city. Wasn't the only reason, but it was a factor. So, we're trying to keep them here, we're trying to bring them here. The only way we know how, the council only has power over this. There's a lot of other things that are stacked against us that we've talked about previously, because the more businesses stay here and the more that come, the residents will see the benefit. They haven't yet, but if the trends continue, as you see here in the rate, the numbers, that 195 next year could be 150, and then 130. That's where it's been trending. So, it's an increase, but at a very large declining rate. So, I just wanted to point those facts out, and is it appropriate to make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to set the tax rate at 100%. Second?
I have a motion and second to set the tax rate. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Boshman.
I'd like to say something. Number one, I understand what you're saying, and I understand what you're going with, $212,000 for a single-family home. That's at the minimum base, but if you own a home that's $300,000, it's a hell of a lot higher, the bill, a lot higher. Now, if you look at that, then you look at the multifamilies, I'll use their numbers, thanks to Chris, he said, the single-family homes went up 9% this year, 9%. Commercial only went up 5%, and industrial only went up 13%. Remember, you told me that today?
Yes, sir.
So, 5%. I sit here, and I, and I listen to everybody talk, and you tell me, and you tell the public that we're opening the doors, we have a single tax rate, it's going to do wonders. But the only thing that's doing wonders, where these people can write off the taxes, is a, a single-family home can't write it off. A single-family home doesn't make money, just the guy that goes to work makes the money. You gave us this spreadsheet, the average income on your spreadsheet in Pittsburgh is $46,000. We're $1,000 more than Winchton, Massachusetts, in income, average income, $1,000. Everybody else is $10,000 to $20,000, $10,000 to $20,000 more. I won't vote for this. And the other thing, it was all I've said today, and I tried to cancel the meeting tonight, a day before Thanksgiving, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we get this report, 3:00. Thanksgiving weekend, the biggest weekend of them all. I've been on this council for five years, five years, I never had this. And then, we can come up with the excuse and say, "DOR." Five years, we never had any problems. But now, we get this before Thanksgiving, and then, top that off, I made an appointment with Chris, there was no work Monday, so I couldn't see him Monday because we had a snowstorm. Tuesday, we had another snowstorm, so I had to come and see him at 3:00, 45 minutes, because he had to leave. And we're going to rush into this, that's going to make a major decision here. I would prefer to hold this for another week. It's not my problem if they're late. I'm tired, I'm tired of them, everybody coming in front of this council, saying, "We have to pass this right away, because if we don't, we're going to miss the buck." Really sick of it. It's tiring. Really, we don't even have time to discuss this, and I won't go for 100, to be honest with you. Although, I like to see it stay the same, at 106. That's an increase of $127.28, and commercial only goes up $32.49, and industrial goes up 1,062, at 106.
So, counselors, well, yes, I'm frustrated that we didn't get the packet until the last possible time, you know, before the holiday. I will say, we typically get all of our packets and information on a Thursday, late morning, early afternoon, prior to a Tuesday meeting. We got our information on a Wednesday, prior to a Tuesday meeting, so we had one more additional day than we typically have before we have to then come here on a Tuesday night and vote on a decision. So, while I'm frustrated that we didn't have an abundance of time, we still had more than the normal amount of time for us to come in here and make our decision. Additionally, this wasn't a surprise, while these numbers are somewhat subject to change, none of this information is drastically or dramatically different than it was before. We knew what we were coming here to vote on today. We knew that we were voting on a, on a, setting a tax classification, and we knew, if you vote for a lower shift figure, the number's going to go up. If you vote for a lower, it's going to go down. So, we knew the basic premise of where we were going. You know, I refuse to believe that the extra day would have dramatically changed how we would have acted here this evening. That said, if there's a majority of this body that's, that feels that they didn't have the information, we can certainly put it out, but we have a deadline, and we have to act, you know, in the next five business days if we're going to be able to move forward. I feel I received the information with appropriate enough time to ask questions and to form a decision on how to vote tonight. I plan on doing so. That said, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. I was just going to ask Mr. Paquette if he could point out the importance of making a decision this evening and the consequences if we don't.
Well, the reason why it's important is it takes time to generate a billing file, and it could take anywhere between, you know, three and 10 days. My office still has more things to do in order to get that billing file, but we have to know what the rate is in order to generate the billing file. Then, we'll roll the file into the new year. We take this year's file, generate a billing file, we send it to the treasurer-collector's office. The treasurer-collector then puts it into the MUNA system and sends me back an edit or audit sheet, and if they don't match, we got to figure out where the problem is. That's usually three to five days of going back and forth. Once that's done, there's 16,000 bills that need to be generated. So, the treasurer-collector has to get that file to the company that does the generation of the bills, prints them, puts them in envelopes, gets them ready to mail. If that bill is not mailed on December 31st, and it goes out on January 2nd, the extension, the abatement period is extended. No late payments accrue interest for the first six months of the fiscal year, and the abatement period goes from being a 30-day period to, is it six months?
Right through May 1st.
Oh, May 1st. So, it opens us up for a whole lot of other issues down the road, administration-wise. And in my office right now, where we have two full-time clerks, myself and a part-time person that are in-house working, I don't want to even, you know, envision what would go on for the first three months of the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the most confusing thing about whatever information we have, whatever information that we've heard in the past, we get a booklet, there's only a page or two that really, if you speak percentages, I think Counsel Deanna Tally can explain the percentages better than anybody here, that's only my opinion. But I question how many people understand the percentages. But as Counsel Green said, people understand dollars and cents and value. And for the last few years, I've been trying to just show how it affects each individual So, speaking from experience on what will cost me, I don't have any commercial property, but I do know that will affect me the most. But since 1982, I've been paying taxes since '72. '82 is when they did the shift. And to me, it's taxation without representation, because you're taxing minority. The minority can never outvote the majority. The minority of businesses that pay this fee because some elected officials in Boston decided it was okay to tax a different class of people. We couldn't do it to another minority, but we've done it to the businesses all these years. And because Pittsburgh is the only one with a split rate in the immediate area, we don't get compared to these other places that are 10 or 20 miles away. We can compare to our next-door neighbors. That's where our competition is, that's who our associates are, our brothers and sisters in business, North Central Massachusetts, the region, that's who we're compared to, not these distant places. So, dollars and cents and value. If you have a blemish, or 100 blemishes, as long as you have one blemish, and people talk about the blemish, until it goes away, to me, the split rate has been a blemish on Pittsburgh for a long, long time, and people question, will it do any good? We'll never know till we get there. So, until we're at a single rate, we will never know. We have that little blemish, and some people, maybe there's some big companies don't like it, small companies certainly don't. I know I paid for 13 years with it, and I knew the difference between what we had and what we were paying. But I think if you look at the North Central, the chart that you gave out, the comparative figures, if the values go up, as you've explained, the tax rate will go down, and the highest value is Princeton at 375.7, and their tax rate is 16. And the lowest ones, it's not 100% here, but Gardner at 193, and the rate is 20, which is the highest rate. So, if your values are up, your rate will go down, and it can happen in Pittsburgh, as just explained. The values are going up. You talk to anybody in real estate, anyone in the assessor's office, anyone that follows what's going on, the values are going up, and the residents in particular. And people care, young people want to get in as quickly as they can and buy low. Old people are looking at how they can downsize or change, they're looking at what their property is worth. Nobody is looking at a percentage. Nobody, unless it's a mathematician or accountant or something like that. People, I do a lot of stuff every day, but I really don't look at percentages. I look at dollars and cents, and I think that's what people want to hear, people want to understand. So, I've been for the, for the single rate for a long, long time. It may not be in my best interest in the tax bills I'm going to get, but it may be in my best interest in the future for when I sell my property. Now, some people think that's a conflict of interest. If it's good for me, it should, I shouldn't be here, but we all fall under the category. If my, if your property goes up, my property goes up. If my property goes up, yours. So, a rising tide floats all boats. So, if things go up, hopefully, interest in Pittsburgh, interest in residential real estate, interest in business, interest on Main Street, to me, that's what we're looking for. I only got one more meeting, and if we go to the single rate, it'll be like I accomplished something. Thank you.
Counsel Zurella.
Thank you. So, I'd like to point out another number. Everyone's throwing a lot of numbers around, and they're all good ones, but I'd like to point out another number, because it's very important to how we look at this and how this impacts the residents going forward. Not this year, so much as over the next five to 10, because, again, this has been a consistent theme of my entire first term, for all of us, not just me, is that short-term thinking got us into every mess we're in. Long-term thinking is what will get us out of it. The number I want to point out to people is 23%. That is our commercial tax base as of last year. 23%. The reason the residential tax bills are high despite this shift to the commercial tax base is because there just aren't enough businesses to make up that levy amount, so the residents are paying it. The larger that commercial tax base gets, the less residential property taxes are going to increase year over year, even if there's less of a shift, even if their nominal tax rate is higher. Their increase, their dollar value increase, like Counsel Donnelly and Counsel Green were saying, is going to be less year over year if we can get that commercial tax base to grow. Just burdening the commercial tax base more isn't going to solve the problem. That's what we tried back in the 80s. That's what got us into this problem. Soaking the commercial tax base doesn't actually get more money out of it, because that tax base itself shrinks, and 20% of a little is less than 10% of a lot. So, the, ultimately, the 100, assuming, let's take one thing for granted, just to start, just to get it settled, there's no way we're going up in shift. No one's advocating that. Our choices are stay at 106 or reduce by some amount up to and including all of it. No one's advocating that we go above 106. That means that 127.28, that 127.28 cents is locked in. No matter what decision we make tonight, that's already happening. So, all we're talking about is the difference between that and the 100 rate, and that amounts to a total, for someone who has a property valued at $212,000, that amounts to a total of $67.34 over the whole year. That's the amount that would increase above and beyond what has already happened, or $5.61 per month. Now, I don't want to minimize anything. I understand there are people in the city who are living in difficult financial situations. I understand that there are people in the city for whom $5.61 a month will pinch. Most of them, most, are not homeowners with homes valued at $212,000. So, and ultimately, we can do what's good for those few individuals in the short term. We can make the short-term decision again. I don't mean again as in anything this council has done, I mean, like was done in implementing the shift in the first place. We can make the short-term decision and say, "Let's ease the burden for this year," but that just delays... that just delays growing that commercial tax base. That means that over the next 10 years, the total increase is likely to be higher than it is if we just pull the trigger on this and bring it down to zero this year. It isn't a magic bullet. It's not going to, you know, making this vote tonight is not going to trigger a business renaissance in Pittsburgh all on its own. But it's the one more issue factor. You know, when people are looking at something, if they're on the fence about it, and you can point to one thing that's better than last year, that might tip them over. On the other hand, if you, if they're on the fence about it, and someone points out that one more factor that's a negative, one more thing pushing them towards Lemonster or Gardner or Lunenburg or wherever else, this could be that one thing. Not from a dollars and cents standpoint, but from a gut standpoint. You know, pay extra money, pay part of the resident's property taxes effectively, or don't, or go to some other community and don't. I'd like to take that off the table. I think we need to stop giving people reasons to say that Pittsburgh is business unfriendly, and this is one more thing we can cross off the list.
Councilor Caddy.
I was determined to just vote tonight and not speak. That ended when Councilor Boeschmann spoke first.
Thank you.
And Councilor Donnelly brought up something personal, and Councilor Green was talking about money. So last year, after our tax classification, we went down to 106. Tom Caputo, I own two commercial properties. I've been in business 35 years in this city. I employ several people. Tom Caputo ran the numbers on my commercial buildings. I always felt it was very unfair to have a dual tax rate, that I was paying more, closer to 140 back when I first got on the council. When he ran the numbers, somewhere around $86,000 plus I paid in this city in the dual tax rate. How unfair is that? This was the most unfair tax system we've ever had. I'm, like Councilor Donnelly, I hope we go down to zero, because my last meeting in a couple of weeks, I want to feel like, "Oh, my God, finally, we made something right." No promises, but it's so unfair. It's been so unfair for years, it's been horrible. Thank you.
Councilor Deena Tally.
So, people who follow me on this council know that I'm all about the numbers, whether it's percentages or dollars. And when I spoke initially, I gave plenty of numbers. I'll make one comment here about the numbers. If we go to a single rate, it's $194.62 average increase for the year. That's $48.66 per quarter, per bill, and $16.22 a month of an increase. So worst-case scenario, it's an extra $16.22 a month. Best-case scenario, which is staying at 106, would be $5.61 more a month. Every 2% we move is only $1.87 more, $1.87. And I say only, recognizing that there are hardships out there, but you can get a newspaper for more than the $1.87 a month, one newspaper. The increase happens when the budget is passed. That's when the meat gets done right there. So, Councilor Donnelly brought up another good point, and that is, for the 12 years I've been here, and there are some in this room who still haven't gotten it, no one has ever said this is going to bring in a plethora of new businesses tomorrow if we go to a single rate. We can't even assess the impact of this unless we get there first. There were councilors past and present who would say, "Well, we moved from 1.4 to 106. I haven't seen anything." No one said you're going to see anything until you get to 100, and stay there. And then you might see something. And even then, we don't know, because again, no one's ever said that that's it. We've got a lot of other things against us, a lot of which we don't have control over. This is something we have control over. I hate this meeting, because, not because of what it represents or what it will result in, because residents, as I said earlier, will listen to the number, and they will shut off. They don't want to hear anymore. And one of us perpetuates it every year, without being fully honest. Because what it makes the rest of us look like is, $125, $190, whatever, they can afford it. Not true. That's why I wish people would watch these meetings, get the full context, and not get the after-story. So, I come into these meetings hoping there'd be a lot of honesty, and sometimes there isn't. If residents understood what our budgetary constraints were, they'd understand why it goes up to an half percent every year, the levy. And the financial panacea that's next door called Lemonster, they jack their taxes up every single year to their residents, and they're just flush with cash, and they're the financial gold standard of the United States of America. Since we're always compared to them, let's ask them how much they overtax their residents. We don't overtax ours, as evidenced by the fact that, what is it, we're in the bottom 20% of the Commonwealth?
Yes.
Bottom 20%. I mean, we're an affordable place to live. It's why I built a home here, because if I wanted to build my home that I love right now in Pittsburgh in another community, I probably had to have paid almost double to build it. I can't afford that. So, we have gone so far, from 137 when I started, we're down to 106, and we're hopefully going to get to 100 today. Why pumping the brakes on this now makes no sense to me. So, again, I've made these comments for 12 years, and I haven't had any impact on my elections. And I can only deduce from that that the residents, again, may not like it, but they get it. They get that we made a mistake 30 years ago, and Councilor Zarela made it abundantly clear, as I have in years past. What we have been doing has only instilled increases for them in perpetuity because the base has left us. We're trying to correct it. In order to correct it, you've got to take some pain. I'm going to take pain. My average value, my value, my home is way above the 212. I'm going to get hosed, but I understand why. I get it, because it stinks. We're correcting another failure of this city from 30, 40 years ago, and it takes courage. Last thing I'll say, and I'm glad the council president brought this up. Back to that other point about this, though. When we leave this meeting, there will be comments made that some of us are heartless, some of us don't think residents can't afford it. You're hearing a snippet of it. Not true. And the paper will perpetuate that, too. And then, of course, the lovely world of social media that's always rife with correct information will also piggyback. So, last thing I'll say is, and I'm glad Mr. Koushmeric said this, President Koushmeric, about the timing. 12 years, this is my opinion now. 12 years I've been doing this. That booklet we get, which I really like, great information, if I had, if I had to, if I had 10 minutes to look at something, that would be the only page I'd care to look at. The single home value, the single home increase or decrease, commercial, industrial, that's all I care about. And it takes me five minutes to understand this page. If we do a 106, this is the increase, 100, this is all I need. All I need is a half hour. I don't have to ask you guys any questions. Very simple. The rest of the package is great information that I want the public to have access to, because it points to things you read earlier, Mr. Paquette, about the growth going on in this city, that some of us aren't allowed to talk about, because that's good news, you know. So, this is all I needed. So when I got this the day before Thanksgiving, and I had the day off, fortunately, and then I had the next day off, and the day after that, I took 20 minutes to look at this, and I said, "Okay, I'm all set. 106 is this, 104 is this, 102 is this, 100 is that. What more do I need to see? This is it." So, I didn't have a problem with when you guys gave it to us, and I'm not going to use the forum to criticize the process. You guys gave us an explanation that was largely beyond your control. All I needed to see was this. Now, if you didn't give us this, I would join the chorus of being upset, and I would advocate we hold it. But you gave us it. I don't need a Rubik's Cube to figure this out. All right? So, I'm all set, and I'm glad he brought up the fact that we get things for our council meetings later than this. So, I'd always go into these meetings thinking I'm going to talk very calmly. Not possible for me. As Councilor Caddy said, he came in saying he wasn't going to talk, and then he had to talk. I thought the same thing, I'm going to be calm, and then I got to hear comments, and I go, "Here we go again." You know, it's like rewinding, respinning the wheel every year. So, thank you very much, and my motion still stands. I know there's others who want to speak, but I don't want that to be lost.
Move the question.
I have, I have councilors who have not yet had the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak, please, councilors. Councilor Squalia, you've had your hand up for a while. I want to go to you. And then, Councilor Fleming, you've not yet had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just want to say that I don't think any councillor here is advocating for increasing our shift rate or even keeping it the same. Maybe someone's advocating keeping it the same. But regardless, we're all in the agreeance in moving towards a single tax rate. I think the only thing that we disagree on maybe is how quickly we get there. For me, I believe that shifting at 6% is too much in this year, especially considering last year, we also shifted at 6%, so that'll be 12% shift for the residents in two years. And I feel that's too high, because the number two concern I hear from everyone in the city is, "My tax bill keeps going up, and my Social Security doesn't go up, and I'm getting taxed out of, I'm getting taxed, my tax bill, my water bill, my electric bill, my gas bill, everything's going up." So I feel like it's, I feel like I want to move to a single tax rate, but I feel like 6% is too much for me at this year, and so I'll be voting against that, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Fleming.
Well, I'll be short. I just wanted to say something on Councilor Zarela's comment about the people that are renting and not living, own a home. They will be affected by this increase, only because their rent will go up to shift the burden from the homeowner onto the renter. But with that being said, I am in total favor of this. I think we should just bring it, just do it right now, because every year, we're going to have this conversation. Every year, we're going to have the same complaints. Our taxes go up every year regardless. Let's just do it. Let's get more businesses in here to help this community grow. And that's it. Thank you.
I'll just add, this is something, you know, six years ago when I joined the council. This was, this is something that I was anxious to move towards this moment. I thought it would take us longer to get there. I'm excited that we're at this point, this evening, where we're even talking about a singular tax rate. And, you know, I've heard others say it takes courage to move in this direction, and, you know, I think, you know, I'm right at or right underneath what the average property value is in the city. And so, the effect on me, while I feel it, it's not crippling to me. And I realize that for some, it will be. But I also, when we talk about courage, this councillor is someone that I've certainly had my share of disagreements over the years with. But Councilor Donnelly, there are very few in this city who are more negatively affected when we vote to move towards a singular rate than Councilor Donnelly. Yet, year after year, I've seen him take a personal hit at the expense of what he sees as being in the best interests of the city. And I know there's others in this room that do that, but I think it's important that we stop and we think about what we really do here, and that at times, it takes personal sacrifices, monetary sacrifices, for what we believe is in the best interests of our city. Councilor Caddy spoke about, you know, over the years, how that's affected him, and I can't imagine what it's, how it's affected other business owners across the city. So, you know, for me, Councilor Donnelly, you know, I agree with what you said earlier. It's been, you know, a pimple or a blemish on this city for a long time, and I think that's a severe understatement. So I'm excited that we're at this point, and I will happily vote in favor. That said, I have a motion and second to set the classification rate at 100% singular rate. All those in, roll call, vote. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so, start with Councilor Donnelly. Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Nay.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarela?
Yes.
President Koushmeric?
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann?
No.
And Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Eight.
Eight to two.
Eight to two.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we adjourned. Thank you, councilors.